Righty, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, at this point I will have the city clerk, Ms. Jean Aymayala, take roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Paul Hernandez.
Here.
And Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Present, thank you very much, Ms. Madam City Clerk, appreciate that. Alrighty, so at this point, she's taking roll call. So, public communication, I will ask the city clerk if there's any, any letters or comments to report out.
We have a presentation.
Oh yeah, we do have the, actually, let's do that after the, let's go and, we'll do the actual presentation after, after the minutes, excuse me, after the public communication. Councilmembers? So at this point, I'll ask for a motion that we do the public communication for it, that is my motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any objections? See you none, so move. Alright, so at this point, Madam City Clerk, Ms. Jean Ayala, will read out, do we know the number of, of letters that were sent in?
There's approximately twenty-five, Mayor. There's approximately twenty-five.
Alrighty.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, my name is Danny Damian, and I am officially submitting my name as a candidate to be considered for an appointment to the vacated seat on the Ballpark City Council to serve my community, to collaborate with the current city council, and to help bridge the gap between the city's residents and its leaders. I love Balden Park, I grew up on these streets where my family and I have lived for over forty years. I attended Margaret Heath Elementary, Olive Middle School, and Balden Park High School. I've established my business in Balden Park and I've served the community and have given back by fundraising and volunteering for countless causes and organizations. So to say that I am a product of this city is an understatement. For too long now, I've watched our city struggle to provide basic services for its residents. We need leadership that responds to the needs of the community, especially in these trying times. In 2018, I ran for Balden Park City Council, and although councilmembers Avila and Hernandez were ultimately the two highest vote-getters and were elected, I was the next highest vote-getter, meaning it's the third, meaning if a third seat was open at the time, I would have, I would have been elected. Applying this logic that treats me as the next runner-up, it makes sense for the council to appoint me just to complete former Councilmember Pacheco's term, at which time, there will be an election held. I respectfully request that the council truly consider the totality of the circumstances when appointing an individual to the vacant council seat. Said person not only must have demonstrated a strong desire, interest, and intention to serve the city to the best of his abilities, but he or she must also be qualified enough to do so. Finally, given that this is, after all, meant to be a democratically-elected seat, the will of the people should be considered when making a selection. When these factors are all considered, I believe appointing me to fill the vacancy becomes a clear responsible and safe choice. So once again, I, Danny Damian, respectfully ask the Balden Park City Council, Mayor Lozano, and councilmembers Avila, Garcia, and Hernandez to appoint me as the interim-appointed Balden Park City Councilmember to fill the seat vacated by former Councilmember Pacheco. Sincerely, Danny Damian. Hello, my name is Anthony Ramirez, and I've been a resident of Balden Park for thirty-plus years. My family arrived to Balden Park in 1956 and has seen plenty of changes. A lot of those changes have been for the progression of Balden Park. Unfortunately, my public comment is in regards to the bad changes. One, Jean Ayala cannot and will not be on the city council. This act is in direct violation of California Government Code 1752A. Number two, at the previous council, city council meeting, the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget was approved. After hours of public input, the council decided to go against the public outcry and did the opposite the public requested. Instead of defunding police, Balden Park City Council decided to increase the general funds budget. I'm asking for an itemized budget of expenses, as well as planned defunding of the Ballpark Police Department. Three, finally, the immediate resignation of corrupt individuals. You know who you are, if you're reading this, it is probably you. Thank you, Anthony Ramirez. Dear Honorable Mayor Lozano and councilmembers, it is my pleasure to recommend Ms. Jean Ayala to fill the vacant city council seat. Ms. Ayala is the most qualified person to fill the position. Jean Ayala epitomizes the loyal public servant. Her devotion to the city of Balden Park is undisputable. Throughout the years, she has contributed much for the betterment of Balden Park. As city clerk, Jean Ayala has acquired a great deal of experience dealing with local, county, and state legislation. She is highly respected by Balden Park residents, public officials, as well as the parishioners and community of St. John's Catholic Church. Ms. Ayala has likewise contributed her love and devotion to children of Balden Park. She has proven to be an outstanding educator for Balden Park Unified School District. She is selfless, courageous, honest, fair, and hardworking. These qualities create the perfect candidate to fill the position. In closing, I highly recommend Ms. Ayala to fill the vacant city council seat. Thank you for your time, Mr. Robert Guzman Varela, Balden Park resident, former retired Sierra Vista High School teacher, Balden Park School Board member. Hello, hello, councilmembers. I would like to make, I would like to make this as short as possible, seeing as how we are now being restricted to one hour of our comments being read. Does the mayor have comments to give to the constituents? He has already blocked on social media. Second, the community demands that all cameras be turned off during the meeting, and not only the mayor or clerk during their speaking time. Third, what does the mayor have to say to his community in response to the recent accusations made by the police chief, Steve McLean? We demand answers, please do not dismiss the question. And finally, whether they're telephoned 1752A or prohibited from appointing any city member or city council into a vacant city council position. City Attorney, what is your response to that? Not advising the mayor of this is a violation of the California Rules of Professional Conduct from a concerned resident of twenty-one years who will no longer accept to be represented by a mediocre group of people, Lilith Ramos. Good evening, Mayor Lozano and members of city council. My name is Santos Hernandez, I've been a resident of Ballpark for forty years. I believe that Danny Damian should be appointed to the city council for the retiring seat of Pacheco since Danny Damian was the runner-up in our past election. Mr. Danny Damian is an honest, successful businessman in Balden Park. With full respect, Santos Hernandez. To city council members, I want to start off by saying y'all better not appoint Jean Ayala to the empty city council seat, as that would be a violation of state law 1752 stating B. No person elected or appointed to the governing body of any city, county, or district having an elected governing body shall be appointed to fill any vacancy on that governing body during the term for which he or she was elected or appointed. However, I understand this body does not care about state regulations and city law. I have no doubt you will do whatever you want with that empty seat, simply because you are a rogue body of criminals who steal from your own people and give it to each other. If that is not shame enough, the name of this great city was tainted even further on Fox News last night at 10:00 PM, when you allowed that conservative propaganda network to paint Latinx people as incomplete and incapable of leading themselves. Honestly, I no problem only promoting Latinx, but promoting them within the police state is simply further ingraining our people into the colonial power that seeks to erase us completely. Local brown cops is not the answer. Strong communities where there is no need for any cops is. So I demand you all release an itemized budget of the share of the city general fund budget that goes to the police, either voluntarily or through the California Public Records Act. We will find out where the money is going, and I'm almost positive most of it goes to bloated overtime payouts and executive salary increases. Lastly, you still are city council members, so I propose you actually do something for your constituents by extending the freeze on evictions and rent until September 30. I would also recommend that you begin to allocate money from the police and create a rent bailout fund, as was done in Houston, for people who have been laid off because of COVID-19 and will still be unable to pay after the freeze is over. That is the least you could do. The residents of Balden Park are watching, and that's from Mario Rodriguez. Dear Mayor and City Council, as a resident of Balden Park, I urge you to revisit the fiscal year 2020, 2021 general funds budget and provide the community with transparency by providing us with, at the very least, an itemized budget of the police department expenditures or divest money from the police department. I also urge you to make the morally correct decision when appointing an applicant for the vacant city council seat. There are so many qualified people that have applied, and I hope that your decision reflects one that is based on merit qualifications and love for the city and its people, not based on personal connections or those that have established positions in city hall. I would like to remind you that based on California Government Code Section 1752A, it would be a violation of California legislation to appoint city clerk Jean Ayala in the vacant city council seat. Said California Government Code states that, quote, "No person elected or appointed to the governing body of any city, county, or district having an elected governing body shall be appointed to fill any vacancy on that governing body during the term for which he or she was elected or appointed." Again, I urge you to do what is morally correct in both situations. Thank you, Fernanda Sandoval. My name is Kiana, and as a resident of Balden Park, I hope that you take the people's voice into consideration when deciding who we want appointed to the city council. Personally, I would like Beatriz Camargo to be appointed for the empty city council seat. She is a known community member and has been fighting for housing rights for at least a decade. With her actions, she has shown care for our city. Also, please do not appoint Jean Ayala to the council, as I have seen reports and news of her being involved in city corruption, as well as her using Balden Park police officers as her taxi service. If we do not know in detail what she has done, it is irresponsible for you all to appoint her, especially during this unprecedented time. It would also be very suspicious and give us even more mistrust of you, Mayor Lozano, and any other councilmembers. In addition, please revisit the fiscal year 2020, 2021 general funds budget, as the council mentioned, and provide an itemized budget of the expenses of the police department, so that we can discuss defunding the police and investing in our community. Signed, Kiana Martinez. Balden Park Council, during the budget council meeting, it was stated that you needed to sign an order for the budget cuts to take effect, but that you would revisit, revise it at a later time. It has been nearly a month, and I have not seen or heard anything in regards to that. You had over two hundred comments from residents specifically on that matter. We have made our voices heard, and if you continue to ignore our concerns and requests, you will definitely hear us come November in regards to the vacancy being appointed today. You need to exclude Ms. Ayala, because it would be a violation of California Government Code Section 1752A. You have nineteen other candidates to choose from. Another concern was the ongoing illegal fireworks, and that topic was not even discussed. Yes, we can report to the PT, but even when given specific addresses, they don't come out to check. Why so much of the budget allocated to that department? If they're not going to address the issues, they should be, do the right thing for once. Signed, Nellie Garcia, resident of Balden Park. Hello, my name is Erica, and as a Balden Park resident, I am concerned about today's appointment. I don't believe that it is fair or legal that someone who is currently working with the city council be appointed. I believe that Beatriz Camargo, who has worked in the community and fought for our rights, be appointed today, as she is the best candidate. Also, I would like you all to revisit the fiscal year 2020, 2021 general funds budget. Provide an itemized budget of the expenses of the police department, and start planning to defund the police. Discussion with the community, as mentioned at the budget meeting. Signed, Erica Caballero. Dear Mayor and the city council, as a resident of Ballpark, I urge you to make the morally correct decision when appointing an applicant for the vacant city council seat. There are many qualified candidates that have applied. I hope your decision reflects one that is based on merit qualifications and the love for the city and its constituents, not based on personal connections or those that have established positions in city hall. I would like to remind you that based on California Government Code Section 1752A, it would be a violation of the California legislation to appoint city clerk Jean Ayala in the vacant council seat. Said California Government Code states that, quote, "No person elected or appointed to the governing body of any city, county, or district having an elected governing body shall be appointed to fill a vacancy on that governing body during the term for which he or she was elected or appointed." I urge you to do what is morally correct in this situation. Thank you, Lilia Macia. Dear City Clerk Ayala, please read this public comment at your scheduled city council meeting. This is submitted by Terry Muse from Waste Management. This year's candidate pool for the Waste Management Internship and Scholarship Program included individuals who have learned from an early age how to succeed despite internal and external hardships. From several young women paving their ways in the male-dominated industry of STEM research, to international students passionate about recycling and global warming. All of the applicants demonstrated resilience, determination, and a commitment to bettering themselves and their community. This year, we are proud to award from Balden Park High School, Zaya Rodriguez, Kendra Nguyen, Herman Cortez, from Sierra Vista High School, Ashanti Gomez, Fernando Castillo, Baldwin Ma, Raruni Vitaya Von Vavich, Jadriel Delem, Alina Mercado, and Adriana Roscala. Due to COVID-19, we were unfortunately unable to hold our internship program this year, but this year allowed us to award more deserving students with scholarships. After reviewing each application, it was clear that all ten of these students are destined for greatness. Waste Management is happy to support them in their pursuit of their life goals and their dreams. And that's submitted by Terry Muse from Waste Management. To the Ballpark City Council, I am a local resident within the San Gabriel Valley and want to commend, comment to defund the police in Balden Park. Proposed expenditures for Ballpark's police are far too high and should be reinvested for community development, parks, and recreation, or even public works to better local infrastructure. Thank you, Ava Chang. Dear City Council, I am very interested in knowing what will it take for you to listen to your residents and consider defunding the police department and reinvesting funds into the community? It is very frustrating when the residents of Balden Park come together to tell you very clearly what we want, with our comments being read for hours and hours, all telling you the same thing, and you blatantly ignored them and make decisions based on your own personal feelings. What more has to be said before you get it through your heads that we, the people of Balden Park, want the police department defunded and those funds be allocated to community resources that will make a positive impact on our city? I would seriously like to know. Sincerely, Rihanna Rivera. Dear Mayor and City Council, my name is Jenny Amaya, and I'm a resident of Balden Park. After reading the recent San Gabriel Valley Tribune article, which highlights how irresponsibly the city of Balden Park has spent its money, I feel so outraged. The working-class families that make up the Balden Park community work minimum wages, excuse me, minimum wage jobs to survive. Your budget decisions could provide resources to give many of these families the opportunity to thrive, so why not start today? How does the police department, which has, which was accused of gender discrimination, losing the city seven million dollars via a lawsuit this year, get most of the city's budget? On top of that, you spent five hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars on a civic center that you never built and increased the police salary, chief's salary by twenty-one percent, according to an audit report. Not only that, but the mayor is lying on social media by posting out of context information and censoring anyone that calls him out on it. Mayor, councilmembers, defund the police and invest in community programs. We are paying attention to your decisions. Thank you, Jenny Amaya. Hello, my name is Sin Gomez. I am a seventeen-year-old resident in Balden Park. Although the point that defunding, although the point that defunding of the police department has been repeatedly addressed by concerned civilians, we demand action. As our representative officials, we are crying out for action that reflects the city's needs and wants. We demand better. Our emails are not to be brushed off or belittled. Although you may believe that the efforts of the Black Lives Matter movement don't apply to our citizens, you are wrong. We too are fighting to not die at the hand of racial profiling. We too want better education and fewer police officers on our streets. We want to truly feel like a community, not only that, but a community that cares about the people within it. With that said, here is what the next generation of voters are demanding. If our needs are not met, you can count on there being systematic change with your removal from office in this next election cycle. Please remember that you work for us, la gente de la comunidad Balden Park. Our city is littered with individuals who have lost housing due to substance abuse and alcoholism. This issue not only pertains to the need of affordable housing, communal housing, but also to the desperate need of rehab programs and centers to help individuals recuperate from these hardships. If this isn't met, how can we expect our parks to be beautiful or expect citizens to be proud of their city? Not only this, but our school system needs help. We are hearing much about how will the police be expected to work more protectively with less funding? Well, the answer is, to that is simple. Schools have been expected to do so for the last decade. Making sure teachers and departments are using every penny within their budget prudently. We need to reallocate funds for preventative measures rather than reactionary ones. Protect us through granting us the tools for success rather than the tools for fear. Lastly, through the wake of civilian demands, we need more transparency. I, along with many others, have realized that we know little to nothing about the individuals representing us, their goals, their motives, how they are spending our funds, and how that will benefit the community. And we lack the literacy to understand the actions of our local government. Our officials need to help us understand what exactly is going on, because we demand transparency. No longer will we be complacent with city officials taking action under the table and sugarcoating the truth. Remember that you work for us, meet our demands. Thank you for your time, Sin Gomez. I just wanted to let the people know that Mayor Lozano was featured on Fox 11 News last night, because his constituents are happy with his work and accomplishments. Ha ha, just kidding. In case anyone missed it, he is being accused of corruption by the former police chief. He is actually being sued by him. Mayor Lozano, you are an actual, literally, walking, talking garbage can with a capital G, sir. You are corrupt, we will not go away. I suggest you resign before you get humiliated by your constituents for not allowing our voices to be heard. I suggest the other human garbage can, Monica Garcia, do the same. You people are a disgrace to democracy. You will continue to hear from us, and that is sent from Cynthia Lopez. Good afternoon, city council, I hope that you are all having a great week. I just want to apologize for the clerk having to read so many comments without breaks. I understand that these past few weeks, it's probably the most work Jean Ayala has had to do since you first got the job. However, I'm not commenting to talk about how you say next every three minutes in a sheep-like manner, but to express my concern for the horrible mayor and police department. Manuel Lozano spends his time and my family's money at V M R posts on Instagram instead of addressing the city's problems. The city council has taken advantage of the coronavirus pandemic in order to hide behind screens and ignore our comments that speak negatively about them. Music makes me lose control. Now I recently witnessed a car accident. I was surprised at how quickly the police responded. About three cars arrived extremely quickly. I was just as quickly disappointed when, instead of helping the family affected, Sergeant Gamboa and Officer Adeta were absolutely losing patience at the fact that they would have to be at the scene of the incident for over an hour. Instead of helping the family, they argued with them and took advantage of a neighbor of the said family. They pulled him away and started convincing him to let them tow the car, but of course, we all know Royal Roaches in the official police, is the official police tow in Balden Park, and they are both extremely corrupt. When my family interviewed to educate the upless man, Officer Adeta, and dumb dumb Gamboa were furious with them. I am Orhemudo, a fifteen-year-old kid who was afraid of the police because of this incident. I was scared for my sisters and brother-in-law, who were getting yelled at by Officer Adeta, because they knew his true intentions. The officer, Herrera, had clearly not had enough experience as a cop, because when he saw people fighting back, he panicked. He threatened to arrest us, as well as search us. He only made these threats after we stood up to him. From the start, he was annoyed and angry. I even heard that he used to work at Smart and Final. I mean, does the police department hire just anyone? Thank you, as clerk, take a minute to breathe every once in a while. I sound like somebody sucking the life out of you, and like you're just blowing a bunch of balloons. Dear City Clerk, I'm Connor Khan, a longtime resident of Balden Park. I'm disgusted by the mayor and the city council and the city clerk. I know that the mayor is a flagrant homosexual gay deviant who had sexual partners like Sergio Corona, and Jean is a lesbian and the whore of Babylon. Paul Hernandez is known to have sex with Monica Garcia right before councilmembers, and is rumored to also fornicate with the mayor. And all of this immortality is destroying our city, and these elected officials are not family people. This is what the Bible says about all your pervertiveness. "The wrath of God is being revealed from heaven against all the godliness and wickedness of people who suppress the truth by their wickedness, since what may be known about God is plain to them, because God has made it plain to them. For since the creation of the world, God's invisible qualities, his eternal power, and divine nature have been clearly seen, being understood from what has been made, so that people are without excuse. For although they knew God, they never, excuse me, they neither glorified him as God nor gave thanks to him, but their thinking became futile, and their foolish hearts were darkened. Although they claimed to be wise, they became fools and exchanged the glory of the immortal God for images made to him like the mortal human being and birds and animals and reptiles. Therefore, God gave them over in the sinful desires of their hearts to sexual impurity for the degrading of their bodies with one another. They exchanged the truth about God for a lie and worshiped and served creative things rather than the Creator, who is forever praised a man. Because of this, God gave them over to shameful lusts. Even their women exchanged unnatural sex relations or unnatural ones. In the same way, the men also abandoned natural relations with women and were inflamed with lust for one another. Men committed shameful acts with other men and received in themselves the due penalty for their error. Furthermore, just as they did not think it worthwhile to retain the knowledge of God, so God gave them over to a depraved mind, so that they do not do what ought not to be done. They have become filled with every kind of wickedness, evil greed, and depravity. They are full of envy, murder, strife, deceit, and malice. They are gossipers, slanders, god-haters, insolent, arrogant, and boastful. They invent ways to doing, to doing evil. They disobey their parents. They have no understanding, no fidelity, no love, no mercy, although they know God's righteous decree that those who do such things deserve death. They not only continue to do these very things, but also approve of those who practice them. All you wicked and evil people are being judged by God's wrath from heaven above." And that is from Connor Khan. I'd like to bring up domestic violence issue special meeting, sent by Carmen Carrillo. Good evening. This is being sent for public communications to be read. It's submitted by Catherine Loser, our community library manager for the Ballpark Library. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, community partners, and fellow community members. The LA County Library has expanded our Great Read-Away program to include reading at home. If you are twenty-one and younger, five dollar, five dollars in fines will be removed from your account for every hour spent reading. Get a fresh start and have fun reading. The LA County Library's lunch at the library program continues at the Balden Park Library. Free lunches for teens and children are available for non-contact pickup Tuesday through Friday from twelve to one PM through August seventh. Please note that lunches will not be available on July third. This program is in partnership with the County of Los Angeles Department of Parks and Recreation. For more information on the virtual Great Read-Away or Lunch at the Library, please visit LACountyLibrary.org or call us at six two six nine six two six nine four seven. We are here for you. Thank you, Catherine. Dear all, I am disgusted by you all. You continuously disappoint the residents of Balden Park. You do not listen to our demands or needs. Mayor Lozano, you're, you're a whole, a word I won't say, crook that needs to be out of office, as well as Monica Garcia and Paul Hernandez. You all have fallen prey to capitalism and greed, and this will continue to hurt our city. Who the heck are you trying to protect? Because it's definitely not the people. Jean Ayala expects you to read each and every word of this email. Thank you, and may you all go to hell. Best, Susan Famasak. To whom it may concern, my name is Samantha Farias, and I was raised in Balden Park and currently serve this community and its students. I am here today to exercise my citizen duties and bring to light the, my grievance with the city of Ballpark's councilmembers. Recent developments have exposed criminal actions on the part of its city's leaders. There is an absence of integrity and honor on the part of public officials who continue to engage in this conduct and cover up. Abundant evidence proves that those criminal actions are part of a longstanding pattern of public corruption in Balden Park that has caused and continues to cause serious injury to the community. This situation demands a legal remedy, and that you, by virtue of your offices, owe the public a duty to pursue. My purpose in addressing you is to exercise my duties as a citizen and call upon you to take the immediate action by listening to the community. My purpose in addressing you is to exercise my duties as a citizen and call upon you to take the immediate action by listening to the community. We need increased funding for a quality of life city. I genuinely question the city's council members' capacity to serve this board. I urge the council members to reflect and seek to build bridges and not walls. And if you can't see that there is injustice occurring within the council board, then I urge you to resign. This community does not need increased funding for police. Instead, we need reinvesting in homelessness, education before and after school scholarships for undocumented youth. Further employment opportunities for professionals who can handle domestic violence calls, mental wellness check in, student safety behavior concerns, and so many other resources this city is lacking. I stand in solidarity with the Black Lives Movement and will continue to fight for quality of life concerns for my city. But most importantly, our city's future leaders are children. And that's submitted by Samantha Farias. Uh, hello, my name is Letty and I'm a Baldwin Park resident. I'm concerned about appointing someone to the city council today without community input. So I hope that you all will represent us through these comments with that. I think it's unfair to appoint someone to the council that works with the city council already. That is highly suspicious considering the corruption that has been in multiple reports recently. Therefore, I hope that you will appoint Beathis Camargo or another outstanding community member that has a history of fighting for our community as Beathis has done. In addition, please revisit the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one general fund budget as the council mentioned and provide an itemized budget of the expenses of the police department so that we can discuss defunding the police and investing in our community. Uh, signed Letizia. First of all, I would like to say thank you for taking the time to read my email. My name is Maria Muro and I have been a resident of Ball Park for all twenty years of my life. It makes me absolutely sick to learn that my city chooses to spend sixty six percent of our taxpayers' dollars on the Baldwin Park Police Department instead of allocating funds or resources that are actually working to better the lives of the residents. E P P D needs to be defunded immediately. The funds need to be invested towards other areas such as ensuring affordable housing, food banks and bettering our schools. It's embarrassing that even after all the money spent on the police, we still have officers like Officer, uh, Officer Sedan and Sergeant Gamboa who lack the ability to adequately do their job and help community members. Apparently, all the money going to the department is spent on teaching officers. Uh, namely Herrera had to point flashlights at twenty year old girls who posed no threat whatsoever. How am I supposed to feel safe in a city where officers are scared or harmless young girls? How am I supposed to trust that these officers will do their jobs correctly? I demand the police department be defunded. I do not feel safe living in a city where an officer under direct supervision of a sergeant is allowed to threaten to arrest my brother in law without probable cause. I do not feel safe living in this city where my fifteen year old brother is scared of the police because officers abuse their power whenever they feel like it. Listen to the community and our demands. Thank you. And this is signed Maria Muro. And those are all the public comments that were received be- before the deadline. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very, thank you very much, uh, Madam City Clerk Ms. Gina Emma Yalla. Alright, so at this point, let me get my agenda.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to tell you that I am here. My name is Marie Contreras and I've been unmuted in the last meeting and this meeting. So I don't get to be heard and say, I am here listening.
Yes, we know you're here. Welcome, welcome, Marie, as always. Alrighty, thank you very much. Alright, so at this point, I guess, uh, wanna go to the counter or do we?
Mayor, I do wanna, I do wanna say some words. Can you hear me okay?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Well, first of all, I, I do wanna ask Shannon, our C E O, Shannon Yachsee. Um, what is the process, Shannon, when there is a uh complaint against any of our police officers? Can you tell, can you share with anyone who is listening, any of the public, um, that submitted comments? Can you tell us about what that process looks like and how, you know, we take these complaints, um, serious? And what is the follow through on that? Just for their information.
I think Captain Haffer, isn't he here?
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, and Acting Captain Hoffer can elaborate on this, but, um, we do take all complaints seriously. Um, we would encourage, um, anybody who feels, um, something inappropriate or illegal has been done by a police officer. Report that, um, and they can report to a supervisor at the police department and, uh, we would like to see a written report. And all of those are taken serious and followed up on.
Is there, is there a specific complaint form or what, what is the process? So that, you know, I, I think I heard some concerns and I wanna make sure, um, Ms. Mudo and others, uh, know what the process is for submitting any complaints.
Um, yeah, if I could ask the Acting Captain Hoffer, he could expand on that a little bit.
Okay.
Sure, thank you, Shannon. Um, yes, we encourage anybody who has a complaint to come in and file it with us. They can do so in person at the police station. They can do so over the phone. Or if they'd like, we can mail a complaint packet out to them. Um, there is a, a formal complaint form that we ask them to fill out. It's not required, but, uh, it does help a citizen to, um, provide all the pertinent facts that they might not think of on their own. Um, so again, they can do that in, in person at the police station. We can mail it to them or they can do it over the phone.
And, um, what is usually the process for investigating any of those complaints?
When the complaint comes in, it's, uh, it's forwarded up the chain of command to the chief of police and the chief of police is the sole person with the authority to, um, order an initial, I'm sorry, an internal affairs investigation on the matter.
Okay, alright, well, good. Um, I just wanted to share that information, uh, so that if the public does have concerns, you know, they, they know that there is a process for that. So thank you for chiming in. I also just quickly, for those who, uh, weren't at the last council meeting, I think it's important to share that, uh, we have a, uh, total city budget of about seventy eight million, if I recall, and about twenty five percent of that goes towards police services. So we do have a, a good amount of funds going towards infrastructure, um, uh, our recreation and community services, um, you know, and other, other services that we offer in the city. We do have a general fund and that's twenty five million, um, approximately. And that's the amount that is being cited. And so, yes, we, we are at about sixty six percent for the coming fiscal year. That fluctuates based on what revenues we bring in. Um, you know, what are the expenses, uh, and so on and so forth. But for the coming fiscal year, I just wanna share that sixty, about sixty six, a little bit less than sixty six percent of our general fund is going towards a police, uh, department, our police services. And, you know, it, it is important, uh, at the last council meeting, I did ask for, for C E O Shannon to share what, if we were to reduce our police funding to six percent, what would that translate to as far as actual police, you know, policing in our community? We are a community of about seventy five thousand residents, maybe probably a little bit more. We're gonna see what the census has to say. And we're about seven square miles. Um, so we're a pretty densely populated city. And if we were to reduce our air funding to six percent, that would result in about six police officers total. So that means that some police officers, um, may not even be on duty like on a, you know, on one, one of those days. So while we hear you and we do wanna be receptive, um, to what some of the convers- you know, to the dialogue, the conversation that's happening right now around the police and I'm certainly gonna be keeping an eye out on what other cities are doing. What is a state proposing? You know, what are we hearing from the public? And I just don't want you to feel like we've ignored you. Uh, it's just, we have to also look at what are our obligations here in the city? Uh, when I was elected in two thousand and seven, the, the funding towards police was already in place. And in fact, at that point, I was expressing concerns that it was even higher than what it is today. It was about seventy one percent. We brought it down. And we are trying to also increase our revenues. If you look at our city, twenty five million for a general fund is not a lot of money. So while, you know, I want everybody to kinda take that into consideration. And while we take into consideration your input on this subject. And I want you to know, just because we have been scaled back, doesn't mean we're not listening. We are listening. We wanna participate in the dialogue. We just have to be practical about how we pull. Also, what are the existing obligations? Now, for the coming fiscal year, our police department took a three million dollar cut. And so that took effect when we adopted the budget and it could only take effect if we adopted the budget. So I just wanna share all that information for those who may not have heard that at the last council meeting. I don't wanna, you know, repeat, but it is worth mentioning and, um, so that's all I wanted to say, Mayor.
Uh, no, thank you very much. And I, I will also be sharing a- at the end as well. I mean, we talked about reform. Uh, we obviously know that is happening throughout the country. And I know that we've also, um, uh, following along with, uh, making certain that we're not using the choco as well. So we'll talk more about it at the end of the meeting. So this will get back to the agenda. Thank you very much, uh, Congressman Monk. I gotta see ya. Uh, at this point, we're gonna go on to the, um, the, uh, okay, the, uh, domestic violence presentation presented by Ball Park Police Department, Cynthia Spinosa. I've, I've requested this several, several weeks back and of course, because of time constraints and so on, we pushed it back. This is a very important subject and I think there's been, uh, uh, um, uh, an, an impact not only ballpark, but throughout the, the region for that matter, throughout the United States. We're being housed in, we're dealing with COVID nineteen, we're dealing with, uh, um, partial, uh, uh, unemployed, employment, uh, and unemployment, uh, black lives, and a multitude of different things that have affected us all. So that's one of the reasons I've asked, uh, Cynthia to give us a, a little summary as to what is transparent, the amount of calls you're getting, the responses and what follow ups we have. So Cynthia, do you wanna go ahead and go, uh, uh, into them, please?
First, good evening. How are you, Mayor and City Council? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, so, um, the calls, to be honest with you, and the, the reports that we're getting are pretty much the same. As much as we think that we're getting a lot more because of what's going on, um, we are not. I mean, we get calls as it is already, so it's not going increasing here in Baldwin Park and, which is a good thing. Uh, that's really, really good. But I do have the presentation that I wanted to, you know, as we go, you can ask me the questions. I wanted everybody to know kind of what we're doing and how we're getting, um, a lot, um, calls and maybe not actual reports, but just information on how they could actually help themselves. Is that okay? Okay, so I know that we have started this presentation last time and they're kinda going through it, but I do wanna kind of emphasize a little bit more on it so, uh, there's an understanding of exactly what is it that we do within the police department. So, um, this is a little brief of it and then as we're going through the slides, I'll go ahead and explain a little bit more. So we do contact the victims, okay? And when we do contact the victims, we go and we explore to safety options, which I'm gonna go into, uh, that as well. We talk about certain counseling and personal support that we could do within here with myself or where can we send them out? We talk about restraining orders if they needed. And we also assist the district attorney if they're gonna need, uh, re- uh, relocation, okay? If needed, um, can you change this slide for me, please? Okay. So some of the resources that we use and that we actually share with them are all the help, um, telephone lines, the eight hundred numbers throughout the county. We talk about all the counseling programs that are out there. And we, I talk about the shelters, the actual, um, the intake of the shelter, all the restrictions. Uh, I have to explain to them that because it's really important that when they go into a shelter, they're aware of the seventy two hour that they cannot communicate with anyone out for the protection of the other victims. We talk about legal help and I'll go ahead into the other slide. There's gonna be more information for you guys. We talk about the police response. How can, how did our police officer do? How can I, um, help with that if there was something that didn't like or if the officer wasn't, uh, very helpful or whatever? And I'll go ahead and talk about that on another slide as well, restraining orders. And then the, how do we, how can they monitor the investigations when the kids go with their parent or with the other parent or out of the, uh, city or wherever they have to go? We talk about something that's really important. Uh, it's a personal safety planning. And with that, I mean, I go into detail of what, what to do, what to, um, get ready if they have to leave, um, restraining order, uh, where to go. The emotional, you know, help that we can do for them. What to take with them. And when I mean, what to take with them, a lot of the calls that I get sometimes is they wanna know what is it that they need? Paper wise, uh, documents and all that. And I go down the list. You know, we talk about driver license, social security, um, passport, money, checkbook and so forth. Um, can you change the next slide, please? And, um, this is the other stuff. We actually, if they need to, I go with them to court. Sometimes they need that support. I refer them to, uh, different organizations and we're going to detail a little bit more of where and the, uh, connections that we have, the, the, or in other organizations. I do work with hand in hand with the detectives to finish the investigation of a domestic violence. If there was an arrest or if there wasn't, or we need help to contact the suspect. We also talk about U visa paperwork and we actually, um, get a lot of that. And that's something more. If you guys need more detail on that, I could explain a little bit more about that. We do get those constantly and, uh, there's a process for that. And we have, from the time that I receive the paperwork and application, I have, um, three, uh, sixty days to fill out and, and, uh, sign it or if we're gonna deny, we let them know. And then they have sixty months to actually take to ho- or to send to Homeland Security after the certified date that we actually signed the, uh, the application. Next page, please, or, okay. So this is the part where it's really important for us to understand that these are all the organizations because sometimes there's stuff that within law enforcement, we can't, um, give them, which is any type of legal services. I refer them to this location and they have different, um, information. There are different organizations. And this is something that is also done through the court system. So I base it and I give them the information as the same information that the court system has. So I don't just, you know, come up with the list. I actually follow the county, uh, court systems, okay? The victim's compensation is also something that we talk about all the time. And I mentioned to them, so when they go to court, the, uh, court system also gives them the compensation for any losses that they have gone through all this, uh, time of domestic violence or any type of, uh, uh, situation for them. We talk about Women's, uh, Wings, which is another organization, the Women in Need growing strong. They have counseling there. And then, uh, the victim's information notification every day, which is called Vine, is really important because we actually register their telephone number there. So when the suspect gets, uh, released from jail, they get a text letting them know that they're all, you know, they're gonna be released. So that's really important. If we don't do it within here with law enforcement, they do it at the court system. I communicate with the, um, advocate court system too. So with, um, there's three of them at the Pomona and then there's, uh, Monty and then I have with Covina as well. Um, if they need any type of, um, shelter for the ni- for the night, we try to, uh, contact our local hotel here, which is, they're very, very helpful. Uh, they've actually been really good to us about that. They'll let me have them, um, stay there overnight if that's all they need just to get out for the night. Any questions so far?
Cynthia, I do have a question.
Yes.
For the shelter, so if you get a call, let's say you get a call of domestic violence and this person has nowhere to go, you will find her a shelter tonight. There's somebody that she can contact tonight?
Yes, so that's eight hundred numbers. All shelters have a, obviously, a telephone number, right, to call all of there. The only reason why I can't do it is because they have to do the intake. I can't do the intake for them, so they have to do the intake. And sometimes it's really hard because the shelters are already occupied. And the other thing that's really hard sometimes is that our victims don't wanna be in a shelter for, most of the shelters are seventy two hours, uh, without any communication. But yes, yeah.
So if she, if somebody here she calls you tonight, the police goes out there, do you help that person get out of the home so you can provide that hotel for the night? How does that work exactly?
Yes, if, if we have to, the officers bring them here. I mean, um, we've been very west again that a lot of this doesn't go to that direction, but it's been occasions that, yes, they bring them here, uh, we work with them to put them into a shelter. And we are, I mean, we're, we're here in the office with them, doing the calls and helping them. So if, uh, I have somebody on, on hold or I'm trying to look for a shelter, I'm here with them, trying to figure that out.
And that's a twenty four seven?
Yeah, if it has to be, yes, they, they will contact me, the officers. We haven't done that in a while, but we, uh, if that's something that they need to do, yes, they will call me twenty four seven.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so in two thousand nineteen, we had over a hundred cases reported. So when I say over a hundred cases, it was a hundred and five cases. I should have put the other five cases, reported. So that doesn't include any walk-ins or any phone calls or referrals. And what I mean by walk-ins, phone calls and referrals is that we get people that just call me for questions or they've been referred by somebody because they want to know about, again, some sort of shelter or if they go and they need a restraining order, do they need a lawyer? Or if they need some sort of information, U visa information? That's what I mean, that those numbers are not included because I don't include it in actual report. I know that you guys want me to start doing that, which I will, and, but that's what that means. So I don't know if that's a little bit more information for you guys or if I could, if you guys need more on that. Does that, does that kind of explain that?
It does. I just have a quick question. Our police officers, how much training do they get in domestic abuse? So that they're aware how to deal with the situation when they're out there? I don't know if you would answer this or our captain, if he's online?
Yeah, I don't, the captain would probably be able to answer that, but as far as the, like, the actual training, I'm not quite sure. But what we do talk about is what the court system looks for and, and stuff like that. But training, I'm not sure, Captain, if you could answer that?
Yes, officers receive training in domestic violence and intervention techniques in the Basic Police Academy. Every two years, officers are required to go through refresher de-escalation training. And domestic violence is covered as part of that block of instruction. And then, you know, on the job training, they can, they'll receive occasional briefing training from their supervisors.
So it's every two years? Is that because of the funding that we can only train them every two years or why isn't it at least once a year?
That's what the mandate is from the state, from our licensing board, California Post. That's their recommendation and that's what we follow.
Okay, so you follow the mandated state two years?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Cynthia, can you, thank you, thank you very much for your presentation. Can you share with us, you know, the number of the hundred and, a hundred and five cases that were reported last year? Do you track their immigration status?
Yes, not only if they request some sort of U visa. I don't track any of that because that's actually not something that I, I do because I'm just the domestic violence advocate. But when we do do the report, we don't ask that. The only time that I know of that is when they actually come back to me because they need a U visa certification. Does that make sense?
Yes, perfect. And then the other thing is, do you also work with young adults, you know, individuals under the age of eighteen? And do you, do you track that information?
Yeah, actually, when we first started this whole program of domestic violence, I was actually going out to the high schools to do presentations on teen dating. It was something that, you know, that they were calling me for to do. There was a couple of times when I had a few reported cases. But I do, I mean, if they call me, the schools call me and the teen center calls me or the park calls me and it's for teens, I'm definitely there. And we do a presentation and I talk to them and I, I don't know if you guys know, but I was a victim myself. So this is something I take very, very, it's a passion of mine to be able to help. So I understand what they're looking for. I understand how important it is to them. I also understand the, what they need. And sometimes it's just a little bit of guidance. So that's what I do when I get that phone call or that referral or the walk-ins as, you know, as much as I can with what I could do and, and help them out.
Great. And the other one is in regards to grant funds. Can you share with us any type of grant funding that you've received to expand your, your efforts or include additional services for our community?
The only, I'm not quite, the only grant that I know that we receive for the actual domestic violence program is the CBGB. And that's the only one that I'm aware of.
Do we, or do you, do you, or is there other folks in the staff that are looking for grants to help expand your efforts?
I'm not sure. I personally, when we were doing this, I know that I had reached out to Kaiser and there's a process and all that too. But as far as right now, I'm not quite sure, to be honest with you on that.
Okay, you know, I'll ask if you and, you know, you know, are in our executive team and of course with Captain, you know, if you can just be mindful of federal, you know, state and nonprofit grants or philanthropic funding that could help expand, you know, some of the, the great work that you're doing because there is money available out there.
Okay.
But if we don't actually apply, we're not going to, as you mentioned, with the Kaiser funds.
Okay, definitely. And then Mark, can you do me a favor? I want to, I want to share something with them. You want to skip this? Because I know we kind of talked about the two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty numbers. Is it okay we skip that so you guys could, so I could get to the other? Um, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, do you mind just going back and showing what the numbers that we have for two thousand twenty right now? Thank you.
So this one, fifty K, fifty cases reported as of June fifteen. Well, obviously in July already, I haven't updated that. And out of those fifty cases, I know that I have sent something to a mayor just to kind of give him an idea of some of the status. I think three or four were actually filed. So with all these, like, you know, I pretty much call them, give them the information, I give them the resources, I let them know that we're here. How can we help? And some take it, someone, you know, they don't want any information, but I do my best to kind of make sure that they get that.
Cynthia, does the immigration status affect any of this reporting for domestic violence?
Excuse me?
The immigration status of a person, does it affect the reporting? Do they know that they are protected and?
Yes, they are. So, and again, that's why the, the whole, when I talk about the walk-ins and phone calls and all that, I get phone calls and they're kind of afraid because they do not know that they could come here, report if they're a victim of domestic violence or a victim period. So I explain to them, a lot of the times they get threatened that the kids are going to be taken away, that they're going to go to jail, that they're going to get in trouble. So I take a lot of time making sure that I explain to them that that is not true, that they could call, so make it come. A lot of times, if they come here, they want to talk to me and they want to report, they make it comfortable enough to where I just go ahead and call dispatch, they sit in office and they'll do a report here.
We have a psychologist available or someone on hand in case it's, it's a, a situation where we definitely need somebody on board that same minute that these person, that these people are reporting, somebody that they can, I know you, they talk to you.
As far as within our department, no. So that's where I go ahead and if I can't help them to, you know, that deep, then I'll go ahead and send them, give them the information and have them go into the, the county website where they have all that, which is the, they have all the forms and, and everything. That way they could kind of get an idea of what's out there for them. But for the most part, I could tell you that they come back because all they kind of want is just to kind of talk about it so they can, so we can guide them there. It's really rare for them to actually want a psychologist. I don't know if that makes any sense.
And I know you're always available because I know I, I've used you guys in the past and you're always available to speak to people. But I was just wondering if, if LA can provide a psychologist on site.
Okay, and, and for that, these are some of the organizations that I send them. Besides this, I, I, we have Haven House, we have Su Casa, Women's Shelter, Long Beach, we have House of Root, we have Win, Winston-Sangamo, which is the same one. And then we also have the self-help resources. If they don't want me to help them, I make sure that they always take something with them. That way they could actually try to find something that they feel comfortable enough. So with those organizations, they actually could help them because they have, they're a little bit more of the, where they have the psychologist and counseling and, and, and stuff like that. So I do make sure that they take something. If it's not my card, my number, I make sure that you take some resources with them.
Okay, thank you, Cynthia.
Okay, next.
Cynthia?
Yes.
I just, I just, you know, I, I think it's worth giving a little bit of background. You know, especially I know that Councilmember Hernandez is asking questions about the funding. And I think it's important to mention that this is, this was the domestic violence advocate position is actually a position that was introduced in two thousand nine. The way that, the way that it came to be was a local activist and she's very, very involved in women's issues, Darby Manchin. She actually approached me and said, hey, West Covina has a domestic violence advocate, one of the few in the, in the region. And, you know, and the purpose of this DVA is to help victims, you know, know how to go through the process if they've been a victim of domestic violence, through the courts, through getting support services, just like Cynthia is describing. And Cynthia stepped into this position beautifully and she has carried it since. And actually, when, when we were first talking about this, we didn't have the funding for this position.
Right.
And so, you know, at that time, it was actually, we were in the recession. So there was no funding. So like Cynthia said, we use CDBG funds for a part-time funding.
Right.
And so, you know, so I just share that because there is need, as you're seeing, to expand on this program. There has been need. And I, I agree with Councilmember Hernandez about, you know, we've, you and I, Cynthia, we've talked about, you know, maybe looking for grants and things like that. Having the case management, I think, will help us. But I would also, I would also say perhaps, you know, working with California Consulting, maybe there is some, some kind of funding, you know, that we can, that we can apply for to help supplement. Because I just want to say, this work is being done. This was not happening prior to two thousand nine. I know that the police department was responding and doing their best, but, you know, you actually have this position who, if, if there's a, a woman and her children that need diapers, if they need housing, if they need whatever resources. Cynthia is that person. And I just want to say, I appreciate all the work that you're doing. And I would love to, and since the beginning that, you know, this has been introduced, I would love to see more funding and, and more growth in this position because I really do believe that there is, there is the need.
Right.
And I, I do remember that not only domestic violence was an issue that you were addressing, but also victims of incest and things like that, right? So sexual abuse. And so the more that I agree, the more that we can document and demonstrate the, the, you know, the numbers and the success. I think that will allow us to secure additional funding because it's necessary.
Right.
You know, it's needed.
Yes, it's, it's very important and, you know, and I still remember when we first started the program, it was just one of those, how are we going to do this? And because I kind of understood the, the victim, we were able to, to implement it. And as we started doing it, we kind of realized that, okay, well, we could actually help every other victim that comes in here. That's, it doesn't have to be domestic violence. I go ahead and help the, the victims of molestation or abuse children and all that. So again, you know, and by, when, when I say I help them, we kind of make sure that all the resources that are out there are given to them. So the other thing that's really important too, that I think, Mark, can you change the slide for me? Okay, so these are the cases. One more, please? Okay, so here we go. So I actually have put together these graphs back when I would do the presentation and I was just doing domestic violence. I was not doing career relations, just domestic violence. So one of the things that I realized when we were doing, when I was doing these reports or when I was talking to victims, they did not understand the process. So I put this together and this is what I would show them and this is what I would show at a presentation. So basically, they call, they call nine one one. Officer arrives and they're going to, if there's a crime or no crime, these are actually step by step of what we do as a police department. Okay, because they were thinking, a lot of people do not understand that when a police officer goes out there, we're not the ones that are going to determine what the case is going to, if it's going to be a misdemeanor or a felony or, or any of that. It's going to be the court system, right? So I kind of just made this so I could explain that to them. So this is a part of the officer, how the report's processed, okay? Next. And then, once the officer does his part, this is a part of the detective. It breaks it down to what we do if there's no arrest, if there's an arrest. What is the step by step that we do as a police department with our victim as far as the reporting and how it goes to the court system, okay? That's the, if there's a misdemeanor or felony, if it's rejected, this is how I base it and this is how I, depends on the victim and their case, this is how I talk to them. This is the information that I give them. Okay, the next slide. And then this is what I do as a victim advocate. The contact, the victim, I figure out if it's an arrest, a restraining order, the resources, again, depending on the case. So every victim that I talk to is completely different. Every case is different, every single case. I don't think there's one case that I get that it's the same constant besides a restraining order. Okay, so I wanted to share this with you guys so you guys could actually have that. And, you know, and kind of you guys needed that to explain to some of the victims of any case, not just domestic violence. And then the next one, I think that was it. So any more questions for me?
Yes, the, the last three slides that you showed us, is that information available, you know, on the police department's website?
Not yet, but if that's something that we could put up once. I know that our website is actually being updated. Yeah, I'll go ahead and make sure that we add that because I know we're, we're working on that. So I'll make sure that this is taken care of and put up there.
Yeah, that'd be great. It's good information for, you know, general public. Thank you.
And it's, like I said, this is something that I put together way back just because I needed to make sure that our, the person that, the victim that I was talking to kind of understood the, the concept. And even at the presentations that I was doing at the schools, this is the slides that I was doing.
Alrighty, well, first of all, Cynthia, I want to thank you very much. I'm sorry that I kept moving them over.
Yeah, it's okay.
Originally requested and this is very important, more so now, in these tough times.
Right.
So what I want to make sure that we do, Cynthia, we could place it on the, on the now, on the actual newsletter, city newsletter, just to remind our residents what's available.
Okay.
Since I mentioned COVID nineteen, domestic, excuse me, and all the various issues that we're addressing, this is one of the priority ones, that families are home and there are issues that do occur.
Right.
So I want to make sure that we get the word out to our residents. So we could place that in the, in the now newsletter. And I want to thank you very much for your presentation. This is very important and thank you.
Thank you. And if you guys have any questions in regards to the, the program, you know, comes up, you guys know I'm here.
Alrighty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cynthia, really quick, I have the public asking what kind of training or credentials you had to do to, to be an advocate for this?
What did I, what do I have?
Yes, they're asking.
Okay, so as far as credentials, I more of a, an experience, a life experience for me. And then my background is actually on business management and HR. So I have a bachelor's degree in business and HR. So, but most of it is just all my experience, yes. And that's why I think I understand it and I could kind of relate to them because I was a victim for many years.
And I understand it. Like I said, I've seen you in action. I've seen your work and you really know how to gain the, the people's trust. And I think that's very important when you're dealing with people with domestic violence. I know a lot of times the, the credentials don't meet with what we're really passionate about.
Right.
I, I also work with a lot of families in the school district. And, and I'm not a counselor, however, life experiences do help a lot. And, and if you have all the correct information, it does, it does help provide it to our community. But I do appreciate all the work you've done because I, I have personally seen you do the work, talk to the people and, and I know your heart is completely in it and you do anything to help the, the community members that are reaching out to you. But I needed to ask that because the residents did want to.
Yes, definitely. It's more a life experience for me.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Cynthia, Cynthia, before you leave, I, if I recall and correct me if I'm wrong, but you were working with the police department already at the time that this position was created. And so you just stepped into this position with ease. You were already with the police department, already working with that department and I think it was community relations.
It was, I was, yes, I was doing the court officer back when I moved from court officer to, to the domestic violence. Yes.
Okay, so then there you go. That's why I think it was a, you know, a very smooth transition. Okay, so then there you go. That's why I think it was a, a, you know, a very smooth transition. But thank you. Thank you for all your work. Really appreciate you.
We should look for funds, Cynthia, so you can continue your training since you're so passionate about this.
Okay.
Definitely believe that, that more training wouldn't hurt anybody. It, it'll even be better. So let's, let's get funding for you.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start reaching out to the um, uh the advocate at West Covina, Diane, and then to Maria Foster and some others over at the counties and see how they could help me and other people that I know from the coalition.
Okay, thank you, Cynthia.
Cynthia, I appreciate that.
Alrighty, bye.
Bye bye. Alrighty, okay, so at this point, excellent presentation by Cynthia Espinoza. Alright, so we're gonna go into the consent calendar. So we have uh items one through um four. Council members wishing to pull any items?
Mr. Mayor, before, I'm sorry, if I may?
Yes, sir, absolutely, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, did we bypass announcements?
Do we buy, you mean the, the public communication that we're talking about?
Uh, we did public communication. Yes.
Uh yeah, go ahead then. Uh we, I, yes, we do. You're right, but go ahead.
Thank you. Um Captain Harper, Harper, um do you mind uh turning on your mic here? Last couple of days, uh there was uh some new information in regards to a, uh an arrest made um in regards to a homicide here in Ballin Park. Um and I'd like to see if uh, you know, Mr. Captain Harper share with us some of the uh information in regards to that, um because this homicide did, did occur back in early June. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um unfortunately, there was a young man that was um shot and killed outside of his home a few weeks back. A uh, an, a nineteen-year-old Ballin Park resident. And um we sent detectives out to the scene. We called the sheriff's homicide bureau. Uh they always assist us with our homicides. Excuse me. So uh through some pretty good detective work, we were able to identify who the shooter was in short order. Uh he is a transient from the Lomita area, so it did take some time to, to find him. Uh the sheriff's homicide bureau worked with their, their major crimes unit and uh had some detectives uh staked out undercover in a park where he's known to frequent. And they were able to take him into custody on the twenty-fifth of this month. He's currently in jail on four and a half million dollars bail and uh he'll be arraigned and come on to Superior Court here shortly.
Thank you again and thank you to uh, to your staff uh for moving forward and uh assisting in this investigation. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you ver, thank you very much. Alright, uh thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Harper, sir. At this point, we'll go over to um consent calendar. So we have items one through uh actually one through four. Council members wishing to pull any items?
Mayor.
Yeah. I'd like to pull item number two, please.
Number two is being requested by Councilmember Monica Garcia. At this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass the calendar uh with the exception of uh item number two. That is my motion.
Second.
Second, any objections? Councilmember Monica Garcia has requested the approval of the contract with the Na- Na- National Court to provide consulting services to update the housing element, a six cycle safety elements and development of a new environmental justice ele- element and the compliance with the state, with the state law. So Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Try to make this really quick. I did meet with staff, um and I did have questions about the recommendation for National Corps. I'm sure that they're a great organization and I understand that they um are an organization that has two arms. One, that's a development company and one that is a consulting firm. And so my only concern, I think, uh regarding you know, if we were to move forward with National Corps updating our housing element. This is a planning document. And then in the future, if they proposed uh an affordable housing project, my concern is that, you know, it does give, it does give the perception um of some of I'm not gonna say conflict of interest, but you know, something along those lines. And I think I'm being really sensitive right now, just given a lot of uh, you know, there's nothing wrong with, there would be nothing wrong, there would be nothing illegal, there would be no conflict of interest in that case. But I think I'm being really sensitive to the perception, um just because I, I feel it's a highly political time. We are looking at uh our election coming up and I feel like people are really wanting to give the appearance of impropriety um more than, more than there is. Um so in addition to the development company taking and I just wanted to express that I did meet with staff. I did ask of, you know, different questions. And I, you know, I, I don't want to go against staff's recommendation, but I did have a question for uh Ben Martinez. And Ben, can you tell us, I understand that MIG has completed the work in the past. They've updated our housing element, I want to say twice before. They are a planning uh firm, from what I understand. And uh I'd like to know, Ben, how many, how many housing elements have each um, you know, uh completed?
Yes.
Each bidder.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Um, um, yes, just, just as a, a little bit additional background. MIG, um which essentially is the second place firm in this, in this proposal. Um they did complete our housing element during the last cycle. Uh they are a very experienced firm and in actuality, both firms, after researching, both firms are actually quite experienced. Um Core, the recommended firm, has completed thirty-two housing elements and MIG has completed thirty-five. Um, Ron, Ron Garcia, our city planner, can probably elaborate a little bit more. And we actually have the the recommended uh firm uh available for questions, but they're both, uh they're both very experienced.
Okay, well, that's good to know. That's good to know. Um I think I'll just, I do have, I do have the concerns about, you know, the development company uh completing our housing element. Um can you speak to that? Just briefly, just let, you know, just.
Yes.
I just have, I, it just, it just, I've worked for a development company and to, you know, the idea of having a development company work on the city's planning document. Can you just, you know, provide some counter to, to that?
I, I could, I could comment on that and perhaps the city attorney might be able to comment further. Um I would just say basically, the housing element is a policy document. It's something that's gonna be done open to the public, available for everyone to sign on, read, provide input. There's nothing secretive about the housing element document. And once it's produced at the end of the day, um, all developers are gonna be able to take advantage of it or not take advantage of it. Um in my history, I don't really look at, as a hu- housing element as that type of document. It's more of a general policy document. Um there's not gonna be any, in my view, any hidden gems in, in a housing element that, for instance, uh Core, in this example, would, would take advantage of. So um that would be my general comment. I did discuss this issue with the legal counsel, our legal counsel and and he determined that there is no legal conflict. Um so that's, that's kind of where I, where I stand on it, Councilmember.
Uh huh. Yeah, and like I said, I, I don't, I don't see any conflict of interest. I think it's just the perception of it. Um, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and go with my, with my feeling on this. And I'm just gonna go ahead and recommend MIG for the, for the um, for the contract. If they've done this before. Uh if they've done, if they've completed this before, they've been a neutral, you know, um they're, they're not gonna come back and, and um submit an affordable housing project, right? They're just planners, straight planners.
Yes, they're just a planning firm.
Uh huh. I think I'm just gonna go ahead and that, that would be my recommendation at this point is um, I just I'm sure National Corps is great. I, I think I'm just being, you know, sensitive to the appearances of things and the perception and uh just because of, you know, with the state controllers uh audit and, and some of these other things. Like I said, there is nothing illegal, nothing improper. There is no conflict of interest. Um but it's just the perception and I just don't want to have to be dealing with this in the future. So that would be my recommendation is MIG.
I, I have a question, Ben. Are, are you there, Ben?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes.
So they're a consulting service, but they're also a developer. We already uh determined that. Rome, are they a consulting service and a developer or are they just a developer?
I'm sorry, was, did you say Rome?
Yes.
Rome is uh just a developer.
And who did the consulting for them?
Um, who did the consulting for Rome? Are you ref- I'm sorry, I'm gonna be quiet. Go ahead.
So we, we have a developer, Rome, right? And we had to get a consulting service out here uh before we got the developer. When Rome came out, is that correct? Or correct me if I'm wrong.
Are, are you referring to the phase one project that Rome completed a couple of years ago?
Yes, how did that one work out? How did we do that project? Did we have a, a consulting service come out here first and then we got the developer, which was Rome at the time? I know you weren't here. How would that have worked?
I'm sorry, so I wasn't employed with the city, so I, I wasn't here. But, but I could tell, answer in this way, you you don't need a consulting service to start a development. Um so the in one way, shape or another, Rome, the developer, got into a contract with the city of Ballin Park to um, to build that housing project. So um there are consultants involved in the, sometimes in the analysis of affordable housing projects. Um but they're usually economic uh consultants. Um but yeah, that would kind of be a, a different situation.
And if we were, let's say, to get Core as a consulting service, we don't necessarily have to get them as a developer, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
But just simply consulting and, and then it would be up to uh what developer can come in to give us a, a better deal for that.
Well, in general, we speak to developers all, all the time. I spoke to another development. There's many, many affordable housing developers. I spoke to another one today that, that looks like they're going to make an offer on a private parcel in our city and, and possibly uh, uh, you know, propose a project, an affordable housing project to the city. So there's many affordable housing developers. Any of them can sort of come at any time and propose things. Um so that's just kind of an ongoing live process. And so Core would just be another developer uh that could do that. They could do that today, tomorrow, during the housing element preparation or afterward.
And it's up to us to accept it or not. Okay.
Yeah, we would essentially analyze the project uh at, at, in its merits and, and see if it's something that we can support. And I, I think the council is giving the city manager and I direction to essentially support and build as much affordable housing as we can. But, but affordable housing projects do require not only a lot of time, but a lot of money. And so we can only do so much. But we're, we're in a mode right now where we're, we're trying to do as much as we can.
Right, and there's a lot of people involved. There's a lot of pieces to that pie, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, thank you very much. So was there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
About that, Vice Mayor. Go, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Alejandro?
Oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um again, this is not about uh, you know, uh any improprieties that uh Core has made. Um you know, the, the items that Councilmember Garcia has raised. Um you know, having a, uh having a consultant who also has a development arm within their, within their umbrella or their family uh may lead to additional questions and, you know, down the line. Um one of the things that we are asking uh for is, you know, the city is, is essentially going to be asked to develop, you know, close to two thousand uh affordable units. Um ideally, you know, I would separate and bif- bifurcate the, the individuals that are working on the development plan. Um and having, you know, an outside, uh then have another uh construction uh development group uh work on those plans. Um you know, like I said, I, I, I tend to also lean uh with Councilmember Garcia on this. Um again, not for anything that has been inappropriate at, at this time, but you know, I'm also looking at uh the future, uh you know, you know, two years, three years, over the next eight or, uh eight years that we have uh development uh gonna be happening in our city. Um so you know, what I would like to do if possible is, you know, um once Councilmember Garcia makes her motion, uh you know, I would, you know, I'll support that. But I think more importantly, um I would prefer to have uh Core uh be one of our developers in the future. Um if the, you know, if the project makes sense for, for them and for us, because we will have close to twenty, uh close to three thou- two thousand uh affordable housing uh items uh or housing units uh that will be need to be built here in the city of Ballin Park uh based on the state's requirements. And I'd rather have, you know, the separations of uh power uh similar to, you know, what the uh audit has kind of raised and to make sure that, you know, there are no uh improprieties um, you know, in the future.
Or just, or just even the appearance.
Alrighty, okay, so, yes, go ahead.
About appearances, I mean, MIG has been used before. And so why not try somebody different? I have no idea who Core is. I know that they develop and I've seen their developments. But I mean, we should try to go and seek other services. We're not gonna know what kind of services they are providing if we don't seek them. So again, MIG has been, has gotten contracts before. To me, that looks like we're preferring a certain company rather than giving others opportunity.
Mayor, um, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know any of these firms and um I just, having worked in the planning and development world and having represented private companies as well as the city, I think I just feel more comfortable recommending a planner, a planning company for the housing element, which is a planning document. And I'm just keeping it very simple. And although I, I'm sure that Core, National Corps is a great company and I really will welcome their, you know, their interest in the future as we look at affordable housing. Um I just want to keep it just, you know, black or white here. Um and, or you know, no gray areas to give the appearance. And I just don't want you know, I feel like we're, we're being um criticized and, and you know, for things that are just appearance. And uh this is, this would be one of them for me and I, I want to be really careful about that at this point and especially moving forward. So my um, my motion will be to, to move forward with MI. Is it MIG or MGI? Let's see.
It's uh if I might.
I think it's MIG. Sorry, I don't have.
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, um i- if um we have, we have talked to MIG, they are able to um pursue the, the, the work. Um this is a very busy time for these planning firms and this type of document, this kinds of document prepara- preparation. So uh, uh we wanted to make sure MIG can pursue the work. Um the, 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 the cost is, is a very similar. But if possible, and I'm not sure if legal counsel can weigh in, it would be very um good if we, if council could direct us if they wish to pursue the contract with MIG, direct uh the city manager, legal counsel to, to, you know, effectuate the agreement. Um you know, and, and get it, you know, move forward with the project. Because to come back in two weeks, um we really are under a, a type timeframe to get this project moving forward, if that's possible. Thank you.
Right, so at this point, there's a, there's a motion on the table by Councilmember Monica Garcia to contract out with MIG. I'll go ahead and second. Any objections?
Objections, I just feel we're not being transparent again. MIG is a company we've used before. To me, that does not look uh like we're being transparent. We need to give other, other opportunities for other uh consulting services. other opportunities for other consulting services and developers that have not been contracted before because we have been accused of of picking the same consultants and the same developers and here we are doing it again with M I G. I'm not familiar with M I G. I know uh I've seen the what the developer Core has done, but again, you don't have to have develop. Again, um I'm objecting to that.
So there's one objection that I will have Madam City Clerk Miss Gina Mayala take roll call.
Councilwoman Monica Garcia? Mayor Manuel Lozano? Mayor Prochamp Paul Hernandez? Councilwoman Alejandra Avila?
No.
Uh the motion passes four one. A three one, excuse me. Uh alright, so at this point, we'll go on uh to the next one that we have on the agenda. And that's the reports of officers, the consideration to make an appointment to fill a vacant city council seat. It's recommended that the city council, uh one, discuss and take action as deemed appropriate to nominate individuals and appoint an individual to fill in the vacant city council seat and two, read by title only and approve ordinance number one, four, five, four entitled and ordinance of the city council of the city of Baldwin Park. Alright, so at this point, council members uh discussion. I know that we've had a a multitude, I believe that total of twenty uh different applicants residents that um want to be involved in 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 the uh the political aspect of of and it's important, of course, that, so this uh this particular seat, uh whomever is appointed will have to run in November, so that's about, uh yeah, so that 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 is the, that is the uh what would occur if we were to take a uh action on this on this subject. So at this point, council members have any questions? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um I just first and foremost, I want to thank all the applicants um for taking their time uh to submit uh, you know, their statement of interest along with the supporting documents. Uh you know, I am very proud uh to have read and also to have talked to many of these individuals um over the la- over the course of the last couple of days, um to understand, you know, their why. Um you know, it brings me great, great pride to know that we have uh many excellent uh candidates. Um you know, that have replied, uh this decision obviously is not gonna be an easy decision, but you know, as I've stated in the past um you know, I have also gone through this uh process, similar process uh with the Valley County Water District. Thank you. Uh so I've gone through this process where I also submitted uh for a vacant position. Um I was not selected at the time, um but I did decide, you know, a few months, uh approximately eight months later that's, you know, I ran for that seat and ultimately I I won. Uh the school board also has gone through a similar process uh in just their last election in two thousand eighteen uh in which, you know, the person that the school board appointed uh did not win their seat in uh November of two thousand eighteen. So again, uh to, you know, in regards to any type of fears or concerns that, you know, whoever gets appointed tonight um if we do that, uh that there, um you know, they will essentially win in November. Uh that is not the case uh whatsoever, as history has shown us in the last couple of elections here in Baldwin Park. Um so with that, you know, like I said, I just wanted to uh thank everyone first and foremost um as we go through this uh, you know, dialogue and uh process, because again uh there are many great applicants and unfortunately, there's only one seat available. Um but again, just want to say thank you again.
Right, thank you. Alright, so at this point, I'll go ahead and make a uh motion for uh the Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
I want to thank uh all the applicants. Uh there was quite a few applicants and everybody well qualified and I think uh they have the passion to be part of city council. I think for many years, a lot of these people are very young and and they wanna, they want to make a difference in the city of Baldwin Park. They're very passionate about seeing our city move forward. I also listened to all of their comments and uh uh grievances of who should be elected and who should not be elected. And I think we need to be transparent and and be guided by the wishes of the people. These are the people that will be voting in November. And I do understand and I'm sure those that submitted their names understand that if they do run in November, it doesn't necessarily mean they will win the seat. However, they're looking forward to being nominated and possibly being selected to be part of city council. And with that being said, you know, there's a lot to pick from and there's a lot of people uh definitely with a lot of qualities to be in city council. Uh I I'm nobody to say how, why are you qualified to be in city council, because I personally feel it takes a heart and and determination to be in city council. You don't necessarily need to know about law, but you need to know about right and wrong. And you need to know about what your community needs. The learning about the law and learning about the process that can come later. So with that, I would like to nominate Danny Damien to take the city council uh to fill it until November. Thank you.
Right, so there is a motion on the floor uh to nominate Mr. Danny Damien. Is there a second? Okay, the motion dies for lack of a second. I'll go ahead and make a motion uh to nominate Ms. Jean Emma Yala for for the seat. That is my motion. There's a second?
Second.
Second, any objections?
Objection, and there's nothing against Ms. Gina Yala, but we have to listen to our community mayor. There's a lot of things being said and we're not listening. So uh you need to take that into consideration. And Jean, you know, I like you and I get along with you and has nothing to do with you, we just need to listen to the people.
Alrighty, um so at this point, Madam City Clerk will take roll call.
Mayor Lozano?
Yes.
Mayor Prochamp Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila?
No.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Alright, the motion passes three one, so uh Ms. Jean Emma Yala will transition from the city clerk position over to uh Councilmember City of Baldwin Park. So congratulations in that area. So I guess we'll do the uh um go ahead and do the uh I guess, do uh legal counsel, do I go ahead and um swear her in?
Uh Mayor, that would be your discretion. The staff report made that recommendation uh that they be sworn in uh today, tonight.
I don't, I don't have the uh, is is, hold on. I don't even have the swearing in stuff. Hold on real quick, let me, let me go, let me go, is uh hold on, hold on.
Ma- Mayor, it's in the, it's in the drawer, one of the drawers.
No, I'm not, I'm upstairs. Have a, I think uh, I think uh uh is Lulu still here?
Mayor, while we wait for that, I just, I also want to thank um the applicants for their interest and encourage them, you know, we have uh the elections coming up in uh November. And so uh there will be a democratic process and so, you know, all are encouraged. Um you know, if that is, if that is what you if that's how you want to serve the community, then there is a democratic process and we, you know, it's it's there, um and and we tre- we treasure it, we cherish it. And so, you know, uh I hope that you are encouraged to seek that open seat or, you know, I mean, really, it's two seats that are gonna be up. Um and I believe in the democratic process. I believe, you know, you put it out to the voters and the voters will decide and so I just want to thank all of you for your interest and, you know, for taking for contributing to your community in the ways that you do. Um there is a, there is a place for all of your voices and and our voices as well. And I think at the end of the day, through a democratic process in November um yeah, the people will decide. And so, you know, that's always an exciting um time and um and so, you know, just be encouraged by it.
Uh Mr. Mayor, uh since we have a little bit of time, there were some comments made regarding government code sec- uh section seventeen fifty-two. I I didn't know if you wanted me to address that very, very briefly uh or not.
Yes, Robert, please. Yes, I wanted to ask you about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Uh that was brought to my attention prior to the meeting tonight. Uh government code section seventeen fifty-two does not prohibit uh the uh uh selection of Jean Ayala. Uh government co- uh because she's a city clerk. Government code section seventeen fifty-two prevents this body from nominating anyone that sits on this body to take that vacant seat. But because the city clerk is not part of the governing body, then government code section seventeen fifty-two would not apply in this instance.
And city attorney, if I could add, um I, correct me if I'm wrong, but she cannot hold both offices. So if she's selected for city council, she will need to resign the city clerk position.
Um um I have done this research before. It's called incompatible, incompatible offices. And I have represented uh uh council members uh yeah that also sat on other boards, so I do know about this. Even though I didn't necessarily anticipate it. And uh that is correct, that because um uh the the uh offices are both incompatible, she could not hold two offices, those two offices at the same time.
Uh alright, very, very good. Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead, I'm going to conduct the uh oath of office to her.
So does she have to uh resign? She hasn't resigned yet, Mayor.
Oh, does she have to resign first?
Uh she, she does not have to resign in writing, but um again, it is incompatible offices. She can't hold both at the same time. So yes, she would need to resign her city clerk position before she's sworn in.
Okay, so, so at this point, do we have to? She's in front of me here, so you are hereby requested to resign from your position as a city clerk of Baldwin Park.
That's fine, yes.
Alright, so she's saying my statement.
So city clerk Ayala are, is that incorrect, that you are asking to resign your city clerk position?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so at this one, let me Alright, so at this point, just stand over here by the camera. Alright, so we should do it, do it sideways, that'll capture it all. Hold on one moment, everyone. Lulu, Lulu just walked in.
Thank you, Lulu.
Hold on, real quick. Alright, so at this point, um Alright, raise, ra- raise your right hand, okay. I, state your name.
I, Gina Yala.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lulu.
Thank you.
Our deputy city clerk.
Mayor, uh Mayor, so this um opens up a, the city clerk position um which will need to be put on the ballot in November. Um I've just uh, I had Lulu prepare and we just sent out to your emails, I shared on the screen. Um we'd like the council to add an item onto the agenda tonight to amend the election in November to open up the city clerk uh position to be voted on in November. Uh you still have sixty days to appoint someone, but they can only serve until November. Um if we're not able to pass this and turn it on to the county before July sixth, we will have to have a special election which could cost the city a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars. So I would recommend that we vote to add this on tonight and amend the election uh resolution to include the city clerk in November twenty twenty election.
Which will allow us to also possibly consider appointing, am I correct?
You still have sixty days to appoint someone and we can bring that back at a later time, but however, they will only serve until the election in November twenty twenty. Um staff, staff has that resolution. We could put it on the screen if you wish. I also mailed out just a couple of minutes ago to everybody. So um yeah, the city tur- attorney can comment, but we would need to first have a vote to add this to the uh item as uh an emergency item after the posting of agenda and we would need to vote on.
That is correct. You would have to bring this on as an urgency item. It would require four votes, Mr. Mayor.
How is it that that was already ready?
What's that?
How is it that that document was already ready?
Hold on, what, what, hold on, one moment, okay, who's speaking?
It's Alejandra. I said, how is it that this document was ready for uh filling the position of city clerk?
Uh I can answer that question. Um I had the deputy city clerk prepare this just in case. Um I know that Gina Yala was an applicant and there's a chance um that she could be appointed. Um and I did think it was prudent to have something ready and be prepared just in case uh because I would hate to see the city pay uh upwards of one to two hundred thousand dollars for a special election.
With all due respect to Ms. Ayala, but we knew that's how it was going to be voted uh when it was said that we were gonna put it out for people to apply. Thank you.
That's very shameful, Councilmember, to be saying things like that.
That's your opinion, sir, thank you.
And 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 they're gone, this is, this is, this is a political, uh when people get funny during these times, just to remind everyone. Alright, so the, so we need a, we need a vote on this one, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, Mayor, we need to vote to add it, first a vote to add it to the agenda and then to vote on the item.
Okay, so this one, I'll go
And Mayor, uh you do, uh as uh as was mentioned, you need four votes to add it to the agenda. Then once it's added, then you just need a regular majority to pass.
Alright, so at this point, I'll go ahead and uh add that we have the uh twenty twenty uh zero three zero and approval resolution number twenty twenty dash zero three five, calling for the general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November third, twenty twenty and request approval from the Board of Supervisors of the County of Los Angeles to consolidate the general municipal election with statewide general election. So at this point, I will go ahead, that is my motion, I have to move this over.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, in order for the urgency item, we need to lay a foundation for the urgency item. Um that uh this item uh came up after the agenda was posted. Uh there was no opportunity to have put it on the agenda. And on that basis, uh it is an urgency item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Alright, there is a second by uh by Vice Mayor Hernandez, uh are there any objections? Okay, seen objections at this point, uh we'll go ahead and move it over. So we'll vote out in on the regular, now we're bringing it out to the agenda, am I correct, the legal counsel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you've added it to the agenda on a five oh vote, so it's now an agenda item. You place it where you wish on the agenda and then you'll take it up as a
Hold on, you broke up legal counsel, go ahead, repeat it.
Regular agenda item. Yes, Mr. Mayor, so you have now placed it on the, you've now placed it on the agenda. So you put it wherever you want on the agenda and you'll take it up as a regular agenda item.
Alright, so let's put it, just put it at the end here, we have a, well, actually, that, is that the only thing that we have left, right? Or item six? I guess
Yes, yes, Mayor, we have a item six, which are the vacancies, uh the appointments to um
Bring that back, can we bring it back to the committee, please?
Sure.
Alright, alright, so at this point, we'll come back, uh legal counsel, am I following right? So I'm now gonna go and open the the uh, the item, the actual uh rescind resolution uh as an item on the agenda, am I correct?
Uh yes, Mr. Mayor, it sounds like you have now identified it as item number seven on your agenda, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, so you would take it up as item number seven uh as you normally would.
Alright, so at this point, it is recommended uh that the city council um rescind uh uh resolution. I create, uh hold on, they're moving it up on me. Am I reading the background here? Because it got moved up there. Whoever's moving that series.
We're prepared for this.
Okay, here we go. So, so rescind resolution twenty twenty dash zero three zero and adopt resolution number twenty twenty dash zero three five entitled resolution of the city council of the city of Baldwin Park, requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Los Angeles to order the consolidation of the general municipal election to be held on November third, twenty twenty, with the statewide general election to be held in the, in the County of Los Angeles the same day and authorize the Board of Supervisors of the County of Los Angeles to canvass and return of said general municipal election and request that the registers, recorders, county clerk and of said county be permitted to rescind election services to the city of Baldwin Park relating to the, the conduct of the said general municipal election pursuant to California Election Code Section ten four zero three and Government Code Section three six five one two and three, authorize the Director of Finance to approve any budget amendment should, should they be necessary. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second, by Vice Mayor, any objections? Alrighty, seen no objections at this point, we'll move forward. Alright. Okay, so we, we at this point, at this point, council members, any, before we close up the city council? Let me, I, I just want to add, before we end here and we talked about earlier. When I, Captain Hopper, I know that, that we have amended your policies regarding the, the, not the, not using the chokehold. Has that been already changed out in, in your, in your, in your protocol? Your, your policies and procedures of the department?
Mr. Mayor, I issued a general order that temporarily bans the use of the credit controlled restraint technique until further notice. We're watching Assembly Bill eleven ninety-six at the state level, which is going to regulate the control hold at the state level. And I, I think it's probably best for us to follow the state model once it comes out. And in the meantime, it's, the use is banned completely in our station.
Alright, so and that, that is in written form for all the officers, am I correct?
Yes, sir. It was, came out in the form of a general order that I distributed across the department.
Alrighty, and then continue. Can we get the, the following meeting, the number of complaints that have been filed against officers? I'd like to take a look at the data that you have, the number of complaints that files and follow-ups and so on and so forth. Like to see if we could get that data to the city council.
Yes, sir. Over what time period?
You know, just, just a time period for the past two years.
Okay, we'll do.
Okay, just kind of looking at, and looking at some of these concerns and issues. And of course, as we know there with the family, the Muro that was speaking earlier, these are issues that are of concern and we've talked about that there is going to be reform in the, in, in this police department as, as, as recommended both from the federal and the state and of course, the, the, the local municipalities. So we want to make sure that we follow up with other meetings, hopefully next couple of months or so, to look at the potential of reform as to how we could be much closer with the community. Even though this police department does an excellent job in that perspective, but I know that there are a lot of input from a lot of our residents of the way some officers may be treating individuals as we, as we heard earlier as well. So just want to make that for the record. Then the last one also, Legal Counsel, we could also bring some of the, or infra, well, I guess, to the acting captain or of our Legal Counsel, some of the, some of the complaints or some of the officers that are, if we have any on administrative leave, what cases are those as a follow-up for the following meeting as well? That will be shared in, in closed session.
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, okay, council members have.
Yes, sir.
Mayor?
Yes, yeah, Vice Mayor, yes, Hernandez.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our captain and the rest of the police department, along with Shannon, if, you know, if you can please provide the two thousand nineteen crime stats and also the year-to-date crime stats for this, this current year. I know we did ask our, our chief to do that back in January and then we had COVID. But I'd like, you know, if you could please provide that report and also walk us through what the crime set numbers are. Thank you. In addition, I'd also like to ask staff if they can provide a roadmap, a report back on a program to assist individuals that have been unemployed, you know, by, as a result of the COVID nineteen economic impact. If there's, you know, what, what type of, what type of a financial assistance program can we look at and perhaps be ready, should there be any grant funding or other available funds to help our community? Thank you. Post those reports if we can do the, the residential assistance program, you know, within the next forty-five days, that'd be fine. And Captain Hopper, if we can do the, the, the comp stats, excuse me, crime stat report, perhaps if, if available at the next council meeting, if not, at the end of July or early August, please.
Yes, sir. I'll hurry at the next meeting.
Mayor?
Go, go ahead, yes.
Yes, I want to thank Captain Hubbard. I know he's been, he's been working a lot and he's been stepped up to the plate and he's been providing a lot of information. He's doing the work of achieving that and just keeping our police department together. And I just want to thank him because I know it's a tough situation and I want you to know that we will work on this and the goal is.
What about to report out?
As well as our community.
Afterward.
If we can remain transparent so our community can understand our department and, and just be transparent with the budget and everything that's going on. And having said that, can update us on the money that Senator Rubio has to buy equipment, digital equipment? I know some of the money has been spent already, but I know we're looking into. So at the next meeting, you don't have to take down, but if you can give us a report on how much of that money is left for the camera that we already had from Senator Rubio, I'd really appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your words.
Alright, anyone else? Okay, real quick, Shannon, let me clarify something that you mentioned. So if, if, if it is possible to consider to appoint someone to the, to the current city, city clerk position, you're saying we, the, the council has sixty days to consider?
That's correct. You can appoint someone for sixty days and they will serve until November election of two thousand twenty.
That's fine. Alright, at this point, we, we're, we're going to go back into closed session. Does council members have anything to share before we close this?
Mayor?
Oh, yes, sorry about that. Yes, council, council member Gina Ayala.
Thank you. I just want to, thank you, Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity to thank my council colleagues who, who showed supportive of me in making this move and I look forward to, as I always have, putting our city first and, and working with, with all of our great staff here. So I just want to thank everybody for our continued work and, and we're going to move forward. So thanks so much.
And Mayor, the login for the closed session will be the same one that we used earlier today. And then we'll log into the seven o'clock meeting to report out.
Alright, so at this point, I'll go ahead and move some women of the city council. We're going to go to closed session.
We're not going to adjourn yet, Mayor, because you got to come back out and close.
Got it, got it. Alright, so we're going to go and check out or are you going to go to closed session? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Mark, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. We're still live.
Okay, thank you. Alright, everyone there?
I'm here, Mayor.
Alright, so at this point, I will report out on three different subjects. Everyone here, is everyone there? I guess we're waiting for everyone. Okay, Legal Counsel, you can hear me, right?
I can, Mayor.
Alright, then we're waiting for everyone else to come on board.
I'm here, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
You have Jean, Mayor, yourself, Alejandra, and Paul. We're missing Monica, but you do have a quorum.
Alright, so, alright, so at this point, I will go ahead and report out the first subject from our closed session is the approval, the vote was a four one with one dissenting from Councilmember Alejandra Avila. And that is to appoint as an interim police chief at this point. Do I give the last name? Is that okay?
Yes, Mayor.
Right, to approve the appointment of Commander Lopez, former retired LAPD commander. Second item that we have is the, we have the settlement with Rookley. The vote was five zero and that's to renegotiate the contract with Rookley. Number three was also a three, a three one, excuse me, a, a. Oh, yeah, okay, so also we, the third is we've given our Legal Counsel, Maribel Medina to move forward and the vote was three. The, that was Councilmember, Vice Mayor Hernandez, Councilmember Gina Ayala and, and myself, Naniel Lozano. And there was one abstention by Councilmember Monica Garcia and there was one noted by Councilmember Alejandra Avila. So those three items, I am now reporting. But at this point, if council members don't have any further questions, I will remove, I will move for adjournment. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, by newly elected, newly appointed, excuse me, Councilmember Gina Ayala. Are there any objections? Seen enough at this point? Good evening, everyone. Viva Baldwin Park. Thank you.
Viva Baldwin Park.
Viva.
Bye-bye.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Night, everyone.